All right, welcome everyone to the ZB meeting for today, February 6th, November 24. Please.
Member Duffy?
Present.
Member Maggio? Absent. Member Bennett? Absent. Member Olson?
Present.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Present.
Member Crowitz?
Present.
And member Makua?
Present.
Perfect.
Um, anyone, anyone have any sort of brief minutes, any timing questions?
Uh, I move to the minutes.
All right.
Okay, and who was second?
Second.
Second.
Perfect.
Correct. Uh, first is, uh, 26 Alley Street. Good evening, my name is Tom Monikas, I'm a lawyer with offices at 56 Central Avenue.
Thank you. There's two of them.
Okay, so we have, we have a legal letters for Alley Street, which I'll read right now. The zoning board of appeals will hear all parties of interest on the following petitions on Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, room 302, City Hall. 26 Alley Street, Lynn, Massachusetts, parcel 067-745-007. Petitioner Fountain Realty Trust, William Danthro, trustee, 104 Windsor Avenue, Swampscott, Massachusetts, by his attorney, Thomas Demakis. To vary the provisions of the City of Lynn's own ordinance to allow the revocation of existing building to construct a multi-use business center containing the following uses: contractors' yard, auto repair, auto body shop, builders' yard, shop, boat construction maintenance and repair, light manufacturing, research and development, warehousing in the garage, garage, period. The requested uses are not permitted in the WFI district. The variance request requires the zoning board of appeals to specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner and their desirable relief if these are substantial detrimental public or assigned. Or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
And we have two letters, uh, support, uh, can you read that?
And one from the Economic Development Industrial Corporation of Lynn, we call it the EDIC. Two to the appeals from James Powell, executive director, about 26 Alley Street. The development team recently met with attorney Thomas Demakis, who was representing Will and Rob Dandrew, petition of 26 Alley Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. Members present included Mayor Nicholson, city councilor Fred Hogan, Eric Lawson, Jamie Marsh, Mike Donovan, James Powell, Jeff Eden, and Diana Smith. The project was presented, and after receiving answers to questions from the development team, there was universal support. On behalf of the development team, I would like to submit this letter in support of the petition. Thank you for your dedication and hard work on behalf of the city. And then there's another letter from, um, city councilor from Ward 6, Frederick Hogan, to Florrie, our chairman, about 26 Alley Street. I respectfully request your honorable body grant the above mentioned petition to allow the revocation of the existing building to construct a multi-use business center. I have met with city officials and the petitioner and fully support this project. Thank you for your expertise and your assistance.
Oh, good morning.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Monikas, I'm a lawyer in the office at 56 Central Avenue. I'm here representing the petitioners, uh, Will Dandrew and the brother Rob Dandrew. Uh, they are Daniel Brothers Construction, when they're not buying their own property, and very, 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 uh, well-regarded contractors in Massachusetts. They have signed the purchase and sale agreement by 26 Alley Street, they haven't bought it yet. And, uh, right now, the only tenant at 26 Alley Street is a printing firm called the Acting Graphics. And the gentleman who owns that is older, I can say that, he's older than me, so he's older. And, uh, he wants to slow down the downsides, and he's looking for a smaller place. And, uh, it's in the waterfront one zone. Just because when they re-zoned, when they came over the waterfront districts 15 or 18 years ago, for some reason, they include Alley Street. And as you know, waterfront one, the use is a very, very restricted hotels, office buildings, condominiums. And the reality of Alley Street is, you turn down to Alley Street, it's a body shop, body shop, body shop, body shop. And, uh, no one's gonna build a hotel there. So, uh, the uses that, uh, we applied for are not allowed in waterfront. They're realistic, and what, what Bill and Rob want to do when they buy the building is their lot is a crying need in the city of Lynn for contractor space. Where, um, 6,000, approximately 6,000 square foot building, but the plan is to divide it into five or six bays, hopefully six bays. It depends on where the structural columns are, whether they can be able to, they's about 1,000 feet each. And, uh, lease those bays out to contractors. They might be body guys, body truck guys, they might be auto mechanics, they might be plumbers, electricians. We don't know, you know, right around the corner in Commercial Street, on the corner of Alley Street and Commercial Street, Nick Benino bought the old, uh, Lynn lumber. And it's where Bentwater Brewery is. And Bentwater Brewery is a big tenant there, but, uh, as you enter that property, on the left is, on 810, contractor space. There's auto mechanics, muffler guys, uh, electricians, plumbers, all kinds, I don't know, I'm not up to date on this tenor list, but that's used to happen. And, uh, Bill and Rob would like to do something here. Not only do we need this board to approve use variances, uh, for these uses we applied for, but we're getting by, the zoning board says that to have a contractor's bay anywhere in the city, you have to get a special permit from the city council. So we applied, the same day I applied for variances from Board of Appeals and Special Department of the City Council, just so happens that we got the hearing with you guys first. But I think, uh, the last Tuesday in February, we're gonna go over the city council, obviously, uh, we have to get both. So if you grant us the relief we're seeking today, uh, it will have to be subject to getting a special permit from the city council. The, this is gonna be a nice project, it's a big lot, 20,000 square feet. No matter what uses end up there, they're all gonna be confined on that lot, there's plenty of parking. And unlike, even, I'm not saying it's gonna be a body shop, I don't, we don't know what it's gonna be. But, uh, we have to buy the building and then look for tenants. But regardless of what it is, even if it is a park, it's not gonna be like the end of Alley Street, next to, uh, Blossom Street, where they just spill all, the cars that aren't being worked on spill into the street. It's really hard to navigate on the street, everything's gonna be confined. As from the, uh, women's league representatives, uh, the, the, the development team was, everybody there was in support, I don't wanna overstep my bounds, but I might say enthusiastic in support. And council, hoping too, so we think it's a good project for the neighborhood. Would like your approval, and Bill and Rob, any answer to the questions you have.
Any question from the board?
Yeah, some clarifications and understanding for the project. The description is sort of a catch-all list of items.
Right.
So one of the, the things I wanna understand, you're talking about contractors' yard, builders' yard, what you describe more as an inside builders' yard, like inside the bay, not out in parking area?
All the activity would happen inside the base.
Right, okay.
What they're gonna do, the building exists, and, and what they're gonna do is, um, I'm not too clear on my directions, I would guess if, if the ocean's east, uh, north, north face, the north side of the building, when you pull into the parking lot, on the right-hand side of that wall, long wall, they'll, they'll divide the, it's shown on one of the plans we submitted, they'll divide it into hopefully six bays, and in front of each bay, there'll be a garage door.
Right.
And everything will happen inside the base.
So you're not tearing down the building, you're just modifying the building?
Exactly.
All right, so adjacent body, uh, body shops on the left of it, you'll be able to drive in, and then you kinda enter your own individual parking garage, pretty much.
Right, right.
Pet Express, with Pet Four, Pet Express.
Exactly, same, same.
Same concept.
Yep.
Uh, and you're not changing the facade?
Except that the garage doors, but yeah, that's, that's the only side that's changing, right? That's the only side that's changing, putting garage doors, because it's a solid wall.
And you're aware that your future tenants will also will need, um, to come in front of us for use group, uh, change, the use of the space, right?
No, that's what this is designed to do, is.
But each, I believe, similar to Pet, uh, um, the, the one that you're using as an example, they each have to come in front of us, because it's a waterfront, uh, district. I, I wish the term of mind was in, but that's, that's, that is the.
I don't think, I don't know, I, just elaborate. If we have to, if we have to, we have to, okay? Or if they have to, they have.
It's a, it's a waterfront, so right, if you come in there, now you.
But that's why, you know, we wouldn't be here seeking your approval for these uses today.
That won't even be you guys, that'll be individual businesses.
Right, but the only reason we're doing it is so then we have the freedom to rent to anybody, knowing that it's been previously approved. Look, I'll talk to Mike Donovan about it, uh, but I did some of the permitting work for Nick Benino, and I also did, there's another one on River Street, that I don't know if you're familiar with, the Jeffrey Raffielli.
I don't, I don't River Street.
Jerry Raffelli did, yep. And we did the same thing, we went to, uh, I handled that one, and we came to the Board of Appeals, they approved. I basically copied and pasted the uses from Jerry Raffelli's, and they approved, uh, those uses. And then I went to the city council, got a special permit, and I haven't been back.
Okay.
To get future.
I'm, again, just slight comments, I'm definitely for it. Uh, I think, I just would probably need just a little bit of clarity from, uh, the city law office, because I know for sure that in a case of commercial streets, they strongly come here often to be requesting.
Really?
Yes, I know Bentwater, we just issued them.
Bentwater's kind of its own thing, though.
There was the muffler shop.
Yeah, the muffler shop, moves mufflers or whatever.
Right, they were here probably two years ago, um, asking for, um.
There was a show link here, but that was on.
They wanted, the muffler shop wanted to do more bodies, they wanted to do more mechanic, uh, instead of just muffler shop, they wanted to do more oil changing, and maybe that's why they had to come. Right, so you're changing the, the use.
Changing the use, yeah.
Right. I, again, I'm all for it, I'm all for it, just need a little bit of clarity from the law office, uh, law departments, and certainly.
Obviously, we're gonna comply with the zoning ordinance, and we're gonna do whatever we have to do.
Sure.
I don't think that's right, but I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and say you're wrong.
I don't think we, any of us know exactly, because I don't thi, I don't think, it may be right, but it, I, I, I'm thinking that it's, it's mainly the main thoroughfares that walk directly to the ocean, so it's.
I don't think that's it, I think it's in a waterfront one zone, just like 26 Alley Street's in a waterfront one zone. And I don't, I don't think that, uh, I don't think that that's the difference, I think the difference is.
I know it won't, it won't worry until you guys, there will be individual tenants will have to seek some type of.
But somebody came in and changed the use, maybe that's why, you know, they were, they were approved as a muffler shop originally.
Down to want to do oil changes and body down, right?
Right, right, right.
Exactly.
You got my thing, whatever it is, I'll talk to you.
Just want to know that, like, I'm, I'm for it, as a personal opinion here, but I just need a little bit of.
We'll, we'll do it the right way.
Okay.
So the, the other concern with the bays is different tenants can come in at different times with different uses, like, you have boat construction.
Boat construction.
It's a very general thing.
If we have a boat construction company in there, I'll probably grow here, that's about.
Yeah, but it's on, it's on.
Just in case it happens.
But it's on.
Boat brewery, right?
Boat brewery, I didn't put a brewery down.
Boat construction is an industrial activity that has hazardous waste, it has toxic fumes, so there's environmental regulations on the type of resin, like if you use fiberglass. There's certain resins you have to use that are below code, so whoever goes in there needs to meet environmental regulations. You don't want something in one bay.
It's on and help.
Migrating into another bay, like, so whatever environmental protections need to happen, you need to make sure it's contained in that bay as a use. So that's where coming in front of us, when they're going to propose a use, we can address those things. The other concern I have is the dumpster out there, I wanna make sure with multiple use, you know, you got, if they're doing repair shop, you know, solvents could end up in there, rags, it rains out, that washes out into the MS4, the storm drainage system, and ends up, ends up in, in, in the natural resources. So just a simple, keep, using a covered dumpster will prevent that. Things like, um, you know, if it's a repair shop, after doing engine repair, you know, recycling oils, you know, antifreeze, all that type of stuff, needs to be indoors or covered, not stored outdoors, not dispensed outdoors, and on a secondary container. So those are the types of things we don't wanna have an impact on the neighborhood or the surrounding environment. That's why it's important that we.
To clarify, the, the use changes, uh, because right now, it most seems like an umbrella catch-all, you know, the way it was, it was, uh, awarded, right, um, so let's move to here.
Yeah, so we're gonna table this with the next part, a little bit?
I think there's other people maybe that want to, maybe before we can just go ahead and table it.
Yep.
Thank you, and, um, we'll let you know. Is anyone else here in favor of this petition that would like to speak? In favor?
Yes.
In favor? Just comment, uh, name and address, please?
Jim Hartley, property 47 Alley Street, which is an industrial building with lots of neighbors on it. And I'm greatly in favor of this project, because it's a neighborhood that's encycled by the zone. And I think this is great, I mean, I don't like, I don't, it's not very popular with these people at all. Pardon, since here's, they're limited to, well, essentially, because it is a problem. Not just there, but I say types of building, uh, consists of a commercial street, a summer street, for, 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 for. Again, it doesn't reflect on that.
Sure.
I think you have this phone, that's good.
Okay, thank you, noted. You wanna ask a question to us, or someone? Yep, uh, anyone else, let's keep them going in favor, and we'll come back. Listen, no? No, opposite? You, you wanna respond to the parking, uh, concerns briefly?
Yeah, so 20,000 square foot block.
Yeah.
The parking is, this, uh, we showed 18 spaces on the plan, we could park more, we could be.
Okay.
We're gonna be very cognizant of the parking, because parking is gonna be contained in the lot.
All right.
So, for instance, you know, if it's a plumber and electrician, everybody's gonna have a space inside their bay, they're gonna have a space at the right on the outside, they can ride a tour, and then there are more spaces. And, uh, the last thing these guys want is to have, what we want, we don't want, if a body shop goes in there, you don't want cars waiting to be worked on in the street.
Yeah.
Like, they will, any, any, uh, vehicles, uh, associated with that building.
The bay.
On the lot.
Associated, associated to the bay, or associated to the building?
Associated with any business that has a bay in the building.
Sure.
There will be a requirement of the lease that they have to park the cars on the land, no off-street parking.
Okay. Okay.
Same thing on Old Street, we own, one sits on Old Street, we virtually don't park the street to restart the neighborhood, so vehicles are portable.
Right, right.
And we could park on Bennett Street, that's not, as well, front of the property, we virtually don't park there or delivery, it's just the top corner, vehicles across the street, we just like that, leaving a lot, we leave, my cousin, Mike Watanabe's fault.
Something different.
Just blink, you can't, for the privacy of the privacy, flash, that's, we think, across the street, our vehicles want to get short outside, the building's all painted, it was painted, the side of the place, it's, there that night, there are cameras, so, you want to play, you want it that way, because we, we don't want.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Well, thank, thank you for doing that. Just again, I think we have a presence of attorney of mana. Again, we're strongly in favor of this petition, I think we just need some clarification. When there's a change of use group or usage of individual bay, does individual tenants need to come back for the variance? If, I think there was an example here, I think, Mr. Olson, maybe you want.
Yeah, so they, they put together sort of a general list of potential activities, but you know, one of them was boat construction. Boat construction and repair, is the repair the engines in there, is the repair fiberglass repairs, which has some toxic materials when it comes to ventilation and filtration, could be hazardous materials, you know, you have antifreeze, you have oils, solvents, all those types of things that could get out into the neighborhood, into the water.
Yeah, the waterfront, right? I think, I use the example of the one, Mercy Street, where Pet Express is, the muffler, you know, I think we've seen those guys come in once in a while here to, for variance, to the city clerk's office, right, for, so we just want to get some clarity from you.
Yeah, no, it's a good bar exam, zoning question. So if you don't exercise a variance within, I believe it's one year, it lapses. So if, if they did not find a tenant that did boat repair after one year, that component, that part of the variance would, would have lapsed, they can come in for a six-month extension. So there could be a situation where they had to come back in, but if it went into an auto body, they have to mention it's an auto body, as long as it wasn't a one-year lapse, that would.
I guess.
And if the auto body, excuse me, if the auto body started off in bay one, and then goes to bay two, we don't have to come back, right? Because it's pre-approved as an auto.
I would say that it didn't, that it would not lapse, it was a variance applies to the whole property.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
But there may be uses that were applied for that just don't come to fruition in the one-year period.
Boat construction's a good thing.
It's good.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. I guess it won't warrant any stipulation.
I think, I think I, I think I have a stipulation of that, two stipulations, one, that there's a covered dumpster on the site, not an uncovered dumpster for whatever, because it is a shared used building, we don't know what's going to get in there.
Okay.
And that there's no activity out in.
In the street?
Out in the, no sort of repairs and things going on out in the parking lot exposed to stuff, to the rain.
And it was a parking?
Parking, uh, no on-street parking.
All work must be done in the bay within the building.
In the bays, indoors, indoor activities.
Required on the deed they give the people, that they'll, no parking lots on the street, the way he was saying he was going to put it.
Yeah.
Are you hearing this?
We're in the opposition here.
Yeah. So, are you with us?
The only thing about dumpsters is that, you know, some of the businesses, like they have, they just have city-issued barrels and recycling.
Yes, however you guys want to manage that, I think this is a stipulation that a member wishes to put in place, however you guys want to manage it, that's up to you guys.
Right, but I, I would appreciate the stipulation, if there is a dumpster, it has to be covered, not, not dumpsters required.
There's an existing dumpster on the site that's open.
Yeah, but that's, this is the.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Does anyone here opposite, the opposition members, against this?
Can we just find out, if I have a time, do we know how many bays are going to go in?
We do know, you just give me your name and address, please, just for the record.
My name's Philip Bloom, but my name is like.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah, just to find out what exactly is going to go into the bays, so she can.
Can you just step in the mic, please? Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, so I, I read that it was going to be boat, auto body repair, so on and so forth, but do they know what's going to actually go in there? How many, how many boat repairs are going to go in there? How many auto repairs are going to go in there? How many oils are going to be changed?
Right, I know, they can tell you, currently, the petition doesn't even own the property.
Right.
He's going to, he's working on purchasing, and so it's really unknown right now until he purchased the property, and then we allow this to go forward, then we'll know exactly who will be the occupants. Right now is really premature, we just don't know.
Okay.
That's all, okay?
He lists contractors' yard and builders' yard.
Yeah.
I want to say inside, builders' yard, inside.
Yeah.
Shop, not that way, they're not open the yard. The other activities was auto repair, body shop, boat construction, maintenance and repair, light manufacturing, research and development, warehousing, and garage, so is that vehicle storage?
No, garage was like a.
So with that, there's regulations that go along with those uses, that they'd have to meet all the environmental regulations.
So I'm predicting some of your tenants will eventually have to come in front of us in their future. You have a broad, it's a broad ask here today, you know?
Yes.
You know, so I get it.
I don't want to keep you, but.
All right. Any members, I mean, anyone else up there against this petition? No? Okay, thank you. What's the wish of the board?
I, I move to approve this request with the stipulation that if there is a dumpster required, that it be a covered dumpster. Otherwise, city-issued containers would be fine because they do have lids on them. What was the other stip, and parking, and you have all the steps.
Right, no activity, no repairs outside the building, and required to put on the lease that they don't pack out on the street.
On the street.
You guys okay with that? All right.
I second.
Okay. Member Duffy?
Yes, very stipulation.
Member Olson?
Yes to grant with stipulations.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes to grant with stipulations.
Member Crowitz?
Yes to grant with stipulations.
I'm a cool one.
Yes.
If I could, there was a reference to the contractor yard being limited to inside.
Right.
I don't believe that was included in the.
Yeah, I get that, yeah.
It's work inside, a contractor yard, something different.
Yep.
It could be just store and stuff.
Yeah, it's inside.
It's all inside.
Everything's inside, right? Yeah.
Granted, the law.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for choosing Lynn.
All right, just going to jump into the next one.
Can you give her that letter? Can you give her that letter? Give her the letter. Okay, let me read you the legal notice for 19 Morris Street. Lynn, Massachusetts, parcel number 020281016, petitioner Valentin Malva. Thank you, Malvanado, thank you. Go ahead, shake of your hand. Owner under agreement 19 Oakland Street, Massachusetts, by his attorney, attorney Samuel Vitale. To vary the provisions of the City of Lynn's own ordinance to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming vacant lot in the R4 district with less than the required lot size, 2,700 square feet of land, plus or minus, where 10,000 square feet is required. Frontage 37.5 feet, a frontage worth 75 feet is required, and right-side yard, six feet of right-side yard where seven and a half feet is required. The variance request requires the zoning board of appeals to specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures but not affecting generally the zoning district which is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the publichood and without nullifying or substantially degradating from intent or purpose of such ordinance.
So also I would love to hear from.
I understand it.
Cheers.
So reading, reading the notice is going to take longer than what I'm going to say. I'd like to have it continued because Council Walsh had a personal family matter that he was seriously dealing with over the past two weeks, so I couldn't see him. And I have information that I think, he thinks it's going to be a three-family, there had been a three-family on this lot, and the city sold it without restriction, I think he's aware of that. But I just want the opportunity, and I spoke with he, and I didn't speak with him, I couldn't speak with him because he's still dealing with his family matter, but I spoke with his designee, which is Council Jakutus, I spoke with the assistant city solicitor, I spoke with the secretary, and said that I was going to come and ask you.
Sure.
To put it over, so I have a chance to speak with him, so he sees the plan, and he's.
But for some reason, he, he submitted a letter.
I understand that, but he left me a message, but, but from what I understand from Council Jakutus and from others is that, let's just say that there's misapprehension about what was being proposed.
Okay. What do you, what do you wish it is?
I would like you to continue it, so I, I honestly, I was surprised that when I called and spoke, you can't leave a message for him, he says, call Council Jakutus.
No problem.
So I did. And then Council Jakutus, it was like I had to deal with, she texted him, he texted her, she called me, so I never had a chance to, to speak with him about it.
So you're asking for, should you?
Yes.
Should we read the letter?
Hold up, and maybe, maybe change.
Yeah, we just hold up the letter, so, all right.
Move to continue.
February 20th?
Yeah, you can follow that. You have a second here?
I start. Who's first? Oh, okay. Thank you. Is that enough time for you, Sam? The 20th? Okay. Mr. Duffy, member Duffy. Member Olson?
Yes to continue.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes to continue.
Member Crowitz?
Yes to continue.
Member Mucaba?
Yes to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you. Know all the business? No?
I just, I just want to comment, just sort of, point of privilege, further void, myself and Brianna had, had attended a Vision Lynn zoning meeting.
Sure.
And went through some of the discussions with them, but was able to share some of the typical things we run across at this board, some of the issues and comments, and they're looking at, you know, trying to take the zoning to what the context of the city is, is really currently made up, and creating a zoning that matches the personality of the different neighborhoods a little bit better than what we currently have, and modernizing the zoning.
I'm glad you guys went, because I wanted to go and.
Yeah, yeah.
But we were able to give them our perspective of the types of things we run across. And, you know, we got zoning, but, you know, you go into a neighborhood and, you know, half the buildings don't meet the current zoning standards, they were pre-existing buildings, but it, it creates issues when, when things begin to fill in and get redeveloped.
Perfect example of the alley streets, right? It shouldn't be a waterfront, you know? It should definitely move towards the industrial, right? So if not, we will all, we'll get these cases in the future.
The idea is to try to, try to simplify some of that stuff so that we're not having to hear every single one of these little nuances.
When's the next meeting?
I know they were, they're jumping around different aspects, so they were, I think they had a meeting earlier.
With me, but.
sidewalk.
Awesome. If you want to run down.
They're going through all the different departments. So I reach out to EDIC and planning.
I don't know, 2020.
Yeah, definitely.
But the purpose of that one is just to get the zoning input.
Good stuff, definitely share, once again, thank. Yep. All right.
Here, right.
Return.
Was it? I'm sure you were during.
Oh, okay.
I'm just during the meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Call in favor, call in favor.
Call it favor. All right.